I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, one and all. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 27, 2024. Welcome to all of those of you who are here in person and to those of you who may be live streaming our meeting today. We will begin by first asking public input on the approved agenda. Is there any input from the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Uh, Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next, uh, is there any public input as far as board action to improve the consent agenda items? If not, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Moving on then to our regular business, item number one. Again, board action and regarding a request for lien compromise and settlement in regard from Evan and Nadine. I'm, I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, Rolf, Rolf Soma?
Rolf Soma.
Okay. All right.
Um, the Auditor's Office received a settlement request from Evan and Nadine Rolf Soma, uh, in the amount of $10,735.17 for various, uh, court-related fees, rental and utility assistance, et cetera. Uh, I'd also like to get on record that there's an incorrect customer number on the agenda. It's listed as 01-04336 and it's supposed to be 01-04366.
Okay. With that being stated, um, I guess, is there any public input on this particular matter?
I'm Evan.
Come on up, sir. Say your name and address.
I'm Evan Rosseema, 311 East Maple, Harrisburg, South Dakota.
Would you like to, um, give us some information about this or more than what we've have here for you?
Uh, go back, uh, yes. Uh, I've been sober for nine years now. I've been working on my credit report and, uh, went in and got approved for a home loan and, uh, this stuff never showed up on my credit report. And, uh, when, uh, the title company did a search on me, that's how this stuff came up. I didn't know it was there. Uh, I'm, I'm not in any kind of position to be able to pay this. I've been working on this for many, many years. I didn't know it was there and just hoping it can go away. I don't know what we can do. My wife's been through cancer. She's been sober four years now. I've been sober nine. We're just trying to better our life.
Well, congratulations on your
Thank you.
Years of being able to, uh, lead somewhat of a normal life.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do.
Uh, anything else you'd like to tell this commission?
Uh, I just hope you guys see it in your heart to compromise this for me and I can go on.
Are you, are you asking for the whole thing to be forgiven?
I would like it to be, cause I, like I said, I've, everything that I've had in the last four or five years, I've paid everything off on my credit report that we thought was there and we did not know this was here.
Is there any questions by this commission?
Evan, is this your first house that you're buying?
This is my first.
This is your first home?
Yeah. Fifty-five years old.
Yeah. Okay.
Sir, um, first of all, congratulations on your sobriety.
Thank you.
It's an incredible accomplishment. Um, I notice on here that there's some charges for court-appointed attorneys.
Correct.
Is that related to some kind of, uh, interaction you had with law enforcement?
Yes.
Okay. And how long ago was that?
That was in 2014, 2013, 2014.
Okay.
I have not been in any trouble in over 10 years.
No, and I appreciate that.
Yep.
Um, it, you know, kind of the view I've taken on some of this obviously is, uh, you know, the government has to provide you with an attorney, but it, but it can charge you on the back end.
Right. I get that.
Would you agree that you should have to pay for some of that? And if so, how much?
Well, I agree, but I just, like I said, I didn't know this was here and, uh, the money that I do have set aside right now, we're using for our down payment on our house. So I just don't have the extra money right now.
Okay. Do you have to pay this before you buy the house?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions by this commission for the applicant?
So you can't, you can't pay any of those amounts?
Not at this time, I can't, no.
How much do you have saved up?
I've got 11,500 saved up and that's the down payment on the house.
Okay. Where do you work at?
I work for a trucking company called LLDT. I deliver Whirlpool appliances to like Carl's, Menards, Home Depot. And my wife couldn't be with us today because she just started a new job. So she couldn't ask for time off to be here with us this morning.
After you buy your house, uh, and I hope you are able to do it, um, would you be able to make some payments to the county after that?
What kind of payments are we looking at?
You tell me. $50 a month, $500 a month?
I could do, I could do $50 a month. I don't know for how, you know? I guess I heard you guys say the $10,000 amount. I don't, I didn't, with this stuff on here, I didn't think it added up to 10,000, but...
Evan?
Yes.
Again, coming for you come, uh, too. And on your sobriety, God bless you.
Thank you.
Did you go to a treatment facility for that?
Yes, I did. I went to Keystone.
Pardon?
I went to Keystone.
Oh, good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, um, I'm sure there's lots of, um, uh, issues that you've had to bury in order to get where you are this morning. So we got about $10,000 worth of leftover material. Personally, I have no problem in waiving all of that, but on the other hand, we have provided you with some services.
I understand.
So is there a possibility that if we waive this sum, and I don't know the, I'm not an attorney, thank goodness.
Okay.
That meant to be a little funny because we have two of those sitting on my right and left. But anyway, is there any possibility that if we waive this thing, that after you get your house and after you do something, that you're able to commit, whether it's on a personal basis or something, that you agree to pay back, uh, $500 or I'm throwing sums out there. I have no idea. And you pay that off on $25 a month or some thing. So we can demonstrate, uh-oh, here comes the judge.
Uh, I just wanted to point out that the closing won't happen with the county lien there. The title company wants these paid off prior to the closing.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there, is there a way to release them and then put it back on?
I don't think so.
It's either all or none.
Could we, could we do a civil promissory note agreement?
Well, since I don't speak lawyer, maybe?
Drew?
Um, I don't know.
Can you do that?
When's the closing?
Right now, we're, we had it set for September 14th, but, uh, till I get, I've got this stuff with you. I already finished one. I gotta go over to the, uh, place over here and then I got, uh, to stop by, uh, Accounts Management and, uh, the Credit Bureau in Sioux Falls and finished two there yet today, too.
So Drew, could you come up, please?
Let's flame something here.
Can I, can we, can we do a promissory note, not file it until after he closes in the house? Cause I don't know, promissory note might, I don't know if that'll screw up the closing.
From a legal advice standpoint, I'd want that in place before you even compromise it.
Great. Well, that's what I mean. So that's what I'm thinking is to table this and see if all that can get done and then we could do it so that he can get his house.
Yeah. We can work on it.
Cause I, I can't support just, I mean, as much as my heart goes out to you, I want to, I don't think it's the right thing to do as far as the taxpayer dollars that have already been spent by the county.
So the commission would have to come up with an amount that would be contemplated within the promissory note, whether it's the whole or partial. So we can draft that afterwards.
Okay. Commissioner Landine, are you saying you want to, uh, have a promissory note for $10,000?
Well, I don't, I don't know what it all, I mean, I don't know if this is, is this bearing interest?
No.
It's not. These are just the flat amounts.
Well, I see, I can't support, I'll be very honest with you, I can't support $10,000. I can support some kind of, uh, if you've got a promissory note of $1,000 or something, but I'm, I think, uh, there is a reward in my mind for somebody who has, and his wife have taken, um, the initiative to put their life back on the rails and are, in, have gone as far as they've gone. And, uh, this $10,000, I don't know where that came from. He doesn't know. So I, I'd like to compromise as much of that as I, as we could and put the rest on a promissory note.
Commissioner Schmidt, I, I think to answer your question, that the money came from the county, from people who pay their property taxes. And what it did is it resulted in these bills here, including court-appointed attorneys, um, uh, no, uh, Excel Energy, the rental company. It looks like John and Lori Homan are on here.
I've made a, I've made a deal with them.
Okay.
On another, on another deal, too.
Okay. Great Plains Psychological Evaluation for some kind of juvenile file on here?
That was my son, yes.
Yeah. So it, it looks like there was a substantial amount of property tax money that went towards compensating these people for some issues that you had in the court system.
Correct.
And I think we're all behind that now and everybody wants to support you, but I think I see the way forward is, is, uh, pay 50 bucks a month, uh, till it's all paid off. You know? They, you know, I'm, I think that's fair.
I, yeah, and I, I agree with Commissioner Aaron's on this one. I would like to see a promissory note for the whole thing. Now, that's not, let's see, like, you know, how can you get these paid down? It doesn't prevent you from coming in and asking at a later date for us to forgive some of that, but if nothing has been paid on these to date, I guess.
I didn't even know they were here.
Oh, I understand that.
That's...
Um, I guess I'd like to just see some effort toward getting them paid.
There'd be no interest involved in this, right? Just paying it down, correct?
It just depends on what the promissory note says, so...
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't monkey around with any of that. Just put up a straight lien amount, 10,735.17, pay 50 bucks a month towards it and maybe in the future, after you've established making some good payments and all of that, you could maybe come back in, whoever's on this commission at any point in time, and ask for modification.
Okay.
But I do, I think that's probably the fairest thing to the, to both you and the taxpayers.
If you have your 50 dollars a month and you are still, let's just say, a $10,000 note and you go to a financial, uh, apply for any kind of, um, you want to buy something and you have to go through a financial analysis and they show that you have a $10,000 note against you, that's still going to pretty much kink your, uh, your situation from, uh, I don't know, if credit cards or borrowing money. I mean, you have one note already and if you wanted to borrow some money for your house for any kind of fixing it up or any kind of home improvement loans and all of those kind of things, that's going to stick right out there. I don't know if any of you have had to do that, but anyway, that's one of the situations why I'm, I'm looking, trying to find a way in which this guy can get himself, um, the, the debt situation. I'm not opposed to paying it back, but I'm trying to figure out his way forward. And I know Commissioner, 50 dollars a month is certainly a, a very minimal fee, you know, and what he pays, he'll be paying 50 dollars a month for a hell of a long time to get that $10,000 paid off. But I'm still thinking beyond when you get your own home, you're going to have expenses.
Correct.
And I don't know what you need, whether it's a roof or whether it's sidewalks or whether you're going to need some internal thing or it's an HVAC you need to replace. Uh, if you have to go through the borrowing process, this note is going to stick pretty much right out in front for you. I, that, that's what bothers me.
Are we at any stage at this time to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion and my motion will be this, that, uh, we will compromise the lien amount in the full dollar amount listed on here in exchange for you, sir, entering into a, uh, essentially a contract with the county.
Okay.
And you sign a promissory note stating that you agree, uh, to pay the county this full dollar amount, no interest, 50 dollars a month. And then we'll even write in there that, uh, you are free to come back if you want to and petition the commission at any time to modify it.
Okay.
Now, the commission doesn't necessarily have to agree with you or it could completely agree with you, but that would be my motion.
I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for a motion right now. I, I get what you're saying, but I would like to see the promissory note. I would like it signed for the full amount and then bring it back, um, for us to compromise it. We could do that next week if everything can get done so we can still do the closing, but I don't want to do, I don't want to make a motion right now. I just, I don't, I don't think the timing is right unless we already have the promissory note in hand.
Well, I don't have any objection to that and so I'll withdraw the motion. That's okay.
Cause if, if you'll move to table it, you know, then I'll support that or we can move it, we can move it to the next meeting.
Well, we, we do need to do something with it. We can't just pass it by, so I'll move to table until the next meeting.
And I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to table this. Is there any public input? Okay. If not, um, I guess, is there any discussion by this commission? Okay. Not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
And sir, I heard you say that you may have, uh, compromised the bill, one of the line items on here. I worked with the Auditor's Office to show them proof that you paid somebody off on here so that we, we don't double charge you.
Right. Right.
Make sure you show...
Well, no, not on this one. This is, this is one, uh, South Dakota had a sales tax lien against me that wasn't mine and I had to prove to them that it wasn't mine. So I got, when I walked out of here, I gotta go there and they've already got supposedly from the, uh, Department of Revenue, all of that stuff. I just gotta make sure that it's been filed.
Okay. Evan, what's your number? I want to talk to you when you're buying a house. We did a lot of mortgages and a lot of houses I sold in my life.
Okay.
So what's your phone number, if you would? What was that? 214?
214-9460.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So when do I, do I come back?
Next week.
Next Tuesday?
Uh, the gentleman back there, Mr. DeGroot, he's gonna write a promissory note.
Okay.
So you'll have to agree to those terms and be willing to execute that and we could probably do it all at once if, um...
You'll, okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So 8:30 next Tuesday morning?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, our next item, Tracy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Your HR Director, Tracy Humphrey, um, bringing to you a request to reclassify the current lead maintenance worker in the Building and Maintenance, um, Department to be a senior building maintenance technician. Um, have listed there in the fax and vettings, um, we already have this, just, I'll do a quick to the end there that says that we do have this already in the budget, but John gave a reasoning for the request, basically stating that, uh, we currently have six personnel and one department head. Our current lead maintenance worker is going to be retiring. Uh, so John, the, uh, Rombo, the superintendent, and I have been working and reviewing the department needs and updating the job description. Um, so previously, the lead maintenance technician was housed out of the 4H event center and they handled primarily a lot of the event setup and challenges and then also worked with our, um, building maintenance technician to take care of county grounds, um, snow removal and things of the like. So for looking to the future, the department head has identified the need to have a crew that can do those same projects, but also have a more specialized position. That's why we're asking for the senior building maintenance technician. Uh, it is a, with a new job description is, is enclosed in the agenda, it's asking for a higher level of HVAC and plumbing maintenance. Um, a lot of this is currently outsourced to general contractors and if we are able to, um, with this new position, we would be able to ensure that we are able to take the care of either the future justice center as well as our current facilities. And so the new, we also have put already in the 2025, a new building maintenance technician, um, for that as well. So just wanted to get formal request for a reclassification of the lead maintenance worker, the fax and vetting, try to give an idea of the overall department. So I'll just, the end section there says the cost. Um, the cost for all of this is actually already integrated into the 2025 budget. So, um, we have, uh, due to the longevity of the previous employment, um, even though we're changing the grade and the title of the new position, there would be no increased cost to the county. Um, and then you all already previously approved for the recruiting of a building maintenance technician, but since it was going to be changing the organizational structure, I included in a, um, a new org chart on the next page that talks about the changes from the lead maintenance worker to the senior building maintenance technician and talking about their specialization.
John, last page here, it says job description approved by John Rombo. Can you elaborate a little bit more on this?
Well, basically, uh, I need to have somebody that can do a little higher level plumbing and HVAC type skillset and that's why we moved it up scale a few things, a, a couple steps. Um, I'm hoping that candidate exists for the money that we can pay them. Um, that by itself might be a challenge, but, um, uh, it's, there's just, what, what kills me as far as expenditures for repairs is the continuous loop of having the people come from Sioux Falls to do this work. If I could have somebody in-house, I could just deal with it, let the smaller end stuff, the filter changes, the belt changes and that stuff like that, that's, you know, somewhat certified to do so, that would be a big savings for my department and the county as a whole.
John, do, do you think we're at the point now where, cause I want to make sure I understand it correctly, probably supportive of it, but just so we know in terms of the budgetary impact, are we basically at the point now where we need a full-time plumber working for the county?
HVAC or a plumber.
Right.
So hopefully somebody could do a little both.
Excuse me, yeah, you probably...
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, we're getting there, yes.
Okay.
Uh, we discussed doing a specialist position. That would be a, a fully specialist. Am I correct? Um, we kind of, uh, came to the conclusion, let's maybe do a, downsize it to a building, uh, maintenance, uh, lead or, um, senior maintenance leader. Um, yeah, we're getting that point without a doubt. If a certified person, that fully vol-tech trained person, that's a full-fledged plumber or HVAC person would be huge for the county.
I know you probably don't have it in front of you right now, but if you had to take a swag, what do you think we spent year over year on HVAC and plumbing issues? Do you think the cost exceeds the amount of what we're going to pay for this person's salary and benefits?
Uh, solely can, no, it'd be over 50% of the cost of the position for sure. Um, I would guess we probably spent upwards of $40,000 on that kind of repair. Um, uh, but of course, this position also does all the additional items, the snow removal, all that stuff, you know?
Yeah, that's already an expense we've got to pay for.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, this person, that's part of why we didn't do the full-fledged specialist position is this person will be required to do a lot of other things that aren't required of a specialist. So, um, it's kind of a catch-all person, but we need a little higher level of care out of it. Basically, that's where we're at.
This is going to help with the new courthouse as well, right?
Correct. Yeah. As you know, or maybe you don't know, but, you know, any new building comes with a lot of headaches upfront, too, with getting stuff online and, and, you know, we'll have a year of contractor help, probably with the, the new build, but rolling right into that, all the headaches will fall on to me, so...
I hope that new building is covered by the, the one-year workmanship warranty. John?
It, well...
I hope we're not paying out of pocket for that.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a year, I'm sure, of, uh, of, uh, coverage, but it's typical that you still have issues right after that year, you know? You know, and this facility now is reaching the age where it's starting to have a lot of little things that are just popping up all the time, you know, little plumbing issues all over the place and, you know, and quite honestly, it's some return work. I've had plumbers here working on stuff in the same areas a couple times. Um, part of the dilemma with that is, is as you bring in a big plumber, plumbing company, you don't get the same plumber. And so they're always coming here and scratching your head a little bit and trying to figure out what the last guy did, you know? That's where, you know, you get an in-house plumber or HVAC guy, they become very familiar with what has and hasn't been done to troubleshoot a problem and it's resolved a lot quicker. There's just, there's just a lot more efficiencies that way.
So if we have a water line that starts to leak, leading to a toilet or something, we have to call a plumber from Sioux Falls or plumber in the area?
Correct. So, so some of that I already do in-house, but I can take it about so far. Um, what I found is like, uh, some of the commercial-grade plumbing is just quite difficult to completely resolve. That's, I, I've had the plumbing company back two or three times just to stop a leak at a toilet, you know, because things maybe weren't quite put in right from the get-go and so they're troubleshooting it and they're replacing parts and, you know, it's, there's just a lot of, uh, different, um, variables when it comes to getting those to seal up. More so than I ever thought, I guess.
So you're, you're saying about 50% of the time would be done plumbing with this position?
Well, HVAC more than plumbing, I'd say, yes.
Any questions for John or Tracy, by this commission?
John, I think you've done a remarkable job up until this time. Really, seriously. And, uh, you know, growth is growth, age is age, is building, like you say. You got a new, a whole new other building that's going to come online, so, and you have issues with, uh, you know, you got the airport to cover with some things up there. You got 4H over there, you got, so I can certainly understand why, uh, another person would be of, uh, value. A good investment for us, I mean, in the long run.
This is just a reclassification? We've already approved the position?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Commissioner Landine?
This is just a reclassification.
Just a classification. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there any public input on this matter? Okay. I guess if none, um, I know it says here, board action, so I guess I'm ready to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Schmidt. Any discussion? Okay. Call the roll, please. entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Landy and second by Schmidt. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Tracy?
Tracy, I'm gonna, on this third one?
Yes.
This is not, I mean, to me, this, just this item, because it's a new classification and a new position, I believe, is that correct?
So, it is a, the creation of a new, um, a new position in the sense that, like, being able to have a senior trial, um, there's not a request for, like, adding to staff at this time, but it is a creation of a new position, yes.
Okay. And that is, my, it's not currently in the provisional budget?
Correct.
So, I guess I'm gonna ask the board to table number three until next, uh, next week, when we're actually doing our budget discussions on what we've already passed on the provisional budget.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table?
And I, I didn't wanna cut off public input, or you, Tracy, I was...
No, that's completely fine.
I'd rather save it for next week.
Okay. Any public input on this matter? All right. Like I said, we had a motion and a second. Any discussion by this commission? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next. Toby, an update.
Uh, good morning, Ms. Chair. Uh, Toby Brown, representing County Planning Department. So, the County Board of Commissioners adopted the first conference plan for Lincoln County in nineteen seventy-one. Uh, that was a pretty robust plan. It called for commercial, residential, industrial, public uses throughout the unincorporated areas of the county. That conference, first conference plan was also the basis for the first zoning laws of Lincoln County, the first subdivision laws of Lincoln County, and the first capital improvement plan for Lincoln County. It was also the basis for the first, or for the first amended zoning ordinance in nineteen ninety-five, which I personally think is probably the most critical law that the Board of Commissioners has ever passed, because two things, it established density zoning or the building eligibility, but it also established the first, uh, laws that we had for concentrated animal feeding operations. So it hit both residential and the agricultural at the same time. Then in two thousand, the County Board of Commissioners adopted the second conference plan for Lincoln County. Uh, that conference plan identified, uh, the essential rezoning test, or introduced the essential rezoning test to the county. The essential rezoning test essentially prohibited all rezones within the unincorporated areas of the county. Then in two thousand and five, the county adopted the current conference plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that current conference plan a little bit. So, as we're updating this current, or the two thousand and five conference of plan, uh, we had one main goal, and that main goal was community engagement, 'cause the one thing that was pretty prevalent with the first three conference of plans is there wasn't much engagement with the public. Uh, this conference plan, we, we had a survey, uh, we had public outreach, listening sessions, stakeholder groups, a story, a story map, so we introduced some new concepts to get some public engagement. I would say, secondly, this plan also involved a reflection of what's going on currently, uh, a reflection of, of what is happening in the unincorporated areas of the county currently. But secondly, we also wanted to look at, what does a conference of plan really do? You know, what, what is our influence or what is our governance as a county? So really, this conference of plan, uh, identifies, uh, the zoning laws, so it's the basis, it's a policy that establishes your zoning laws, it establishes your subdivision laws, establishing your floodplain regulations. And I should say, the zoning and the subdivision regulations, those are the unincorporated area ones. Uh, we know that we have nine municipalities and they all have their own jurisdiction zoning and subdivision regulations. But more importantly, you know, Lincoln County's not a high-service provider. The only thing that we really provide is transportation. And so, this policy or this plan should be the basis for those decisions that we make going into the future, or I should say, not only decisions, but those investments that we make going into the future. And lastly, probably the most important thing is it's really, it, it, and it allows us to engage with the counties, the cities, the townships, our other service providers. It's the basis for that. It shows them where we're going, and it allows us to then have those discussions with them. Through that public engagement, we heard many things from the public, but I would summarize into two main things we heard. The first thing that we heard is that they wanted the county to, to really communicate and cooperate with our municipalities better. The second thing they said is keep, keep rural rural and keep urban urban. The first one was easy. I think staff's already trying to work towards those issues just to keep everybody informed. You know, staff believes that it's easier to, to make the phone call than it is to wait for the phone call to happen. And so, that's leadership. The second part of it, though, was, we're a very diverse county. We're a very dynamic county. It's hard to say, basically, that we can have one policy that's gonna fit all areas of the county. And so, that next part of it, we have refined that a little bit, uh, through the, through the goal, but essentially, I'll, I'll just read it, is to ensure the rural areas of Lincoln County remain rural to the greatest extent possible and that growth is planned in a deliberate and measured manner. And I should say that, that word growth is important, because that word growth, it doesn't include it in the current conference plan. It wasn't included in the two thousand conference of plan, but it was part of the nineteen seventy-one conference of plan. That's just a recognition of what's happening in the area. And then out of that goal, we establish policies. First would be guide preservation of agriculture and avoid regulations that have an unreasonable impact on agricultural operation. That same policy has existed since nineteen seventy-one, in two thousand and two thousand and five. Guide urban development through the planned development district. That's a new concept. That's what I'll say is the big thing, uh, that would be changing through this policy. Uh, guide residential development to locate on lots of record eligible building sites and appropriate planned areas. Again, appropriate planned areas, that's a new policy. Uh, guide commercial industrial development to rural service areas and appropriate planned areas. Again, appropriate planned areas, that's a new policy. Guide construction of public and private and public infrastructure in a manner that addresses existing and future deficiencies, new policy. Guide institutional land uses to appropriate areas that will allow for the sufficient provision of services, new policy. So with that, uh, goal, I've identified, as, as I just stated, a number of new policies for your consideration. One of the things that, uh, if you go back to the first real plan that, that we worked on was the master drainage plan, and through that process, we had some robust, uh, public engagement as well. And really, what we learned through that process is that Lincoln County isn't a one-size-fits-all. There's three components to Lincoln County. There's the northern part, which is urbanizing, which is becoming a city. There's the middle part, which is a rural area, which are those communities, uh, that are established, that are, that don't have, uh, the, the robust, uh, growth outside of them yet, but the growth will be approaching. And then there's the third part, that's the agro, agricultural part of the county, and that's your southern part. What's interesting is, when we started the first kickoff meeting with the conference of plan with our consultant, we discussed a staff that with the consultant, but every single, uh, public engagement session we had, whether it be the open house, the listening session, the stakeholder meetings, the engagements we had with the cities, that those three areas became prevalent, that everybody kept talking about them, that Lincoln County isn't just one specific policy or one specific area, it's a multitude of that. So essentially, Lincoln County's a multi-sport athlete. We're good at many different things, but we're not one thing. And so, what you're looking at also is, is potentially, it'll be a little more glossier, but this will be the cover for the new conference of plan. And a lot of conference of plans talk about growth and shape and, and build and those kind of things. And really, what, what we identified is that this plan, twenty fifty, for Lincoln County, should be about connecting Lincoln County. That should be about looking at all those different areas and finding ways to lead and identify policies and laws that are gonna fit to maintain those areas, but also to enhance those areas. It's about connecting the municipalities, it's about developing them in a way. One thing that you realize with government is we're all a bunch of sandboxes, and with Lincoln County, there's a lot of sandboxes. There's the townships, there's the cities, there's the service providers, there's the county. What the goal of this plan is to do is to break down all those sandboxes into one big sandbox, which would be Lincoln County. And with that, you know, Lincoln County, as that boundary, was established many, many years ago. And with that, that boundary is not gonna change. That boundary will always be the same, what it is. What we need to do is operate within that boundary, cooperate, connect within that boundary. So one of the things that we always look at is population projections with it, and so, and I'll start off by saying the current conference of plan identified in twenty twenty that you would have a population of approximately twenty thousand, two hundred less than what actually happened. And you're gonna say, well, how does that happen? Well, it's crystal ball. I mean, we're not gonna predict what that is, but more importantly, or the majority of that population growth occurred within the municipalities. We're not planning for the municipalities of Lincoln County, we're planning for the unincorporated area of Lincoln County. But with that projection, we're looking at twenty sixty, and this is a linear, or twenty fifty, this is a linear projection, so you're looking at historical growth patterns and, and where it's going, of, of having a population of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. We're not gonna hit that on, we're not, we might be above it, we might be below it. But the important thing is, with the population projection, is that it is your strategic plan. That's what you're working towards. Every policy you make, every hire you make, everything you have influence on should be based on the understanding that we're gonna grow to that population. That is, again, what your strategic plan is. So as I mentioned, in two thousand and five was adoption of the current conference of plan. And the most important policy of a conference of plan is your future land use map. That's the guide for investment, that's the guide for reinvestment, and that's the guide for approvals or denials of what the landowners wanna do with their property. It's a guide. The current future land use map for Lincoln County identifies primarily agricultural areas, and then identified urban expansion areas. The urban expansion areas are meant to preserve those areas for city expansion, and so they're not meant to be rezoned in those areas. The problem is, is that, is that the majority of the people wanna develop within those areas, so we don't have a plan for that, we don't have a policy for that. And then it becomes a conflict between us and the municipalities as we work through how we deal with these things, primarily because we don't have a vision for that or a plan for that. And then the second part of this is, is the joint jurisdictional area, and that's changed a little bit. Uh, the city of Sioux Falls has bumped down to one oh six because of their agreement with the city of Harrisburg, but that's a separate policy, that's a separate agreement that's, that's individual between the county and the city of Sioux Falls. What this new future land use map would do, would do a couple things. One, it doesn't change the predominant land use in Lincoln County is now, it was in nineteen seventy-one, and it always will be agricultural land uses. But what it does do is it recognizes the fact that we have a lot of development happening in a particular area of the county that we don't have a plan for. And I'll let you under the hood of planning, the purpose of really planning or the intent of planning is to say, here, not there, there, not here. But the problem with your current conference of plan is that when people come in, uh, we have to tell them, you have to find a place along the interstate. That's all we have. There is no real place in the county where we're saying, we would like you here. And so, that's when we reach into the conflicts. We have the tough meetings with the, with the neighbors, and we have the tough meetings with the applicants, and we have to say yes or no. What this plan does is it recognizes the fact, and that area that's called the planned growth area, that's the established metropolitan planning area. That's a federally designated area that's eligible for federal funds, that allows us to tap into resources, uh, to grow and develop that area. But also, it allows us to identify an area for landowners to, to know when they can develop their property, but more importantly, for developers to look at where they can develop their property. But it doesn't change the remainder of the municipalities in the county. Allow them to grow within their own framework and not be pressured by development, uh, that they're not ready for. But then it also identifies that there, the most, that there are critical areas along the interstate that are undeveloped, that we should, that we should push development to, uh, to, to develop in those areas, but it should be, be developed in a coordinated and not a piecemeal-type development. So with that, uh, identified within that area four main policy areas, um, and these areas are not to change anything that's out there today. Uh, these area, these policies are to look at if there's gonna be new development or redevelopment in these areas, this is what it needs to be. So the first one would be the agricultural area, and again, that's gonna be the predominant land use in the county. A lot of those, uh, uh, development policies are the same that currently exist today. Uh, we're just streamlining them in a way that's more succinct to what, uh, what we see happening out there currently. The second one, the planned growth area, again, that's the major policy change. Uh, that identifies the specific area, uh, that we're guiding development and growth to in the county. And with that, we're developing policies. And if you look through all of that, and I won't read everything, but I'll look at the two main policies. Change of zones shall utilize the planned development, zoning district to ensure development is consistent and supported by appropriate municipal plans. So, and this, and that policy and the next policy, you'll see two shells. And usually in government, we don't like to use the word shell, because it holds us, beholds us to something that we have to, to, to follow. But with that, uh, what it's really saying is, is that we wanna utilize those areas that planned development areas already planned. The city of Harrisburg, the city of T, the city of Sioux Falls is already planned. They've already identified, even beyond that area, what they would like to see for land uses there. The conflict is, when's the timing of that gonna be? And what do we want, and we, and the conflict, the other part of the conflict, too, is the city's saying, well, we don't know if your zoning is gonna concur with our zoning. So really, what this policy does is it says, applicant, landowner, developer, you approach the county staff, and you identify what your concept is for those areas. Through those concepts, we'll work with the applicant, uh, to do a planned development district. We're familiar with planned development districts, we have a number of them on the books right now. And really, the, the intent of the planned development district is to look at a coordinated planning approach to a specific area, which is what we'll do with that. But we'll work with the municipality, we'll bring them on right away so that they're aware of what's going on, so they don't show up at a meeting and be for or against it, that it's consistent with what the planning process is. The second part of this is change of zones shall have supporting municipal approved preliminary subdivision plan. Wish we already had that policy today. Uh, the conflicts that we have or the issues we have today would be better solved if we had that policy. 'Cause as you're aware, within that plan, or, within that planned growth area, that's primarily governed by those cities' subdivision regulations. So they control the development of land use, uh, the infrastructure developments, and even the plating fees that are associated with it. What this policy does is it brings us back into the fold. It allows us to, to, to push that process through, to be a part of that process through, before it even gets to you as an approach to a rezone decision. So it allows better coordination, it allows better planning. And so with that, then there's the other, would be the rural service areas. We currently have those now, those are commercial industrial areas, those are your interstate interchanges. The main policy shift there is to really say we want these developed in more of a campus-like setting, so that it's a more comprehensive look, so all the roads are developed, all the drainage is developed, all the land uses are clearly defined, so that we're just issuing permits. Uh, we're not going through, uh, uh, through a robust process every single, every single step. It's one robust process and leave it at that. Then the fourth area would be the existing municipal areas, and I think it's clear that, that we don't have any jurisdiction over that. That's their sandboxes. They control their planning and zoning activities within those areas, but we can be fully engaged with them as well. Uh, we can work with them to make sure that, uh, they have the support and the planning that they need, uh, to go through that process. So as we started this process, we were the only game in town, but, uh, the city of Sioux Falls, the city of T, and the city of Harrisburg is currently updating their conference plans as well. Uh, staff has been able to be a stakeholder in the city of Harrisburg and the city of T, and part of the things that we discussed and learned from them was some of the input that we've had in these policies and plans. Uh, city of Sioux Falls, we were involved in the kickoff part of it, uh, but we're not a stakeholder. Uh, the county stakeholder, uh, would be one of our planning commission, uh, members. And so, uh, I have had the ability to talk to the city of Harrisburg and the city of T to share this concept with them. They're very supportive of it, they think it would address a lot of the issues that we currently have right now. Um, it would also allow us, uh, to, to have better planned development, uh, in the, in the, in their growth areas. So really, um, the next step in this process is, is to really get some feedback from the board, uh, but then, uh, also, the intent is, is that we're gonna try to do a, a listening session with all of the municipalities in the county. So staff will go out to the, to the various, uh, communities, uh, at their city council meetings to engage with their elected officials, to share some of these concepts, too, uh, to make sure that, uh, that we're all understanding of what these policies could do and would do. Uh, but more importantly is that these are just policies. Uh, the real meat and potatoes of this will be in the next couple of years when we update the zoning, the subdivision, and a capital improvement plan for the county. Um, and really, uh, those will be the, the things that get us to that point. Uh, but more importantly, I, I think it's, um, you know, reflecting on all those processes is that we're, we're in a unique situation, a beneficial situation. We have growth. We have people that want to be in Lincoln County. We have people that want to develop in Lincoln County, live in Lincoln County, build businesses in Lincoln County. And our role is really to just make sure that continues, that we don't get in the way of it, that we have succinct policies that people understand. And right now, it's a challenge. I think the landowners and the development community are curious of how we're going to implement different things. They take their shot many times and they don't know if they're going to get it or not. With these policies and plans, we can go through the development process on a more efficient and a more consistent basis, which is really what government should be doing with land use perks of it. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Toby. How many people were on your committee, Toby?
Yeah, so we had, if you sum the total of it, we had about 1,000, over 1,000 people that participated at the various levels of it. For stakeholder group, we had over 150 people that we invited. Not all of them showed up to those meetings. But consistently throughout that process, which is what's important, we heard the same comments, really the issues there, over and over again. And again, I should say, you know, there are some people say, well, we're 70,000 people. We got to remember the rural area, which is really what's governed by this plan, is in between 11,000 and 12,000 total people. So 1,000 people are right at that, you know, kind of statistical era part of it, so.
So tonight, Toby, we're meeting with the city council and we're going to review their plan, 2040 plan, I think it is.
2050, yep.
Our 2050 plan. How will we be talking about ours as well? We're not on the agenda. I never got that on. But are we just reviewing theirs? So we better understand where they are, so when we really get down to implementing the changes that we're talking about, we better, we've got that airing with them, right?
So great question. So tonight, you're going to hear about their 2050 conference plan update. They haven't started, they've kicked it off, but they haven't got to a point where they're going to share. They can share timelines with you, but they're not going to share policies with you at this time. That plan will be the one that governs the joint jurisdictional area. Our conference plan does not have any impact on that. So no, I've engaged city staff with what our policies are, but it really doesn't govern that area at all, so.
And I think that's the, at least for me, that was the primary impetus, Commissioner Schmidt, in wanting to start this dialogue with the City of Sioux Falls. Because you know this, private industry and developers and landowners, they deserve and they need stability in order to be able to plan for the future. You know, there's hundreds of millions of dollars of economic development and growth that this plan will drive. And not only that, in terms of dollars and cents, but quality of life and what kind of community we're going to have in the future, planning and zoning has incredible control over quality of life. So as we go into this, at least the motivating factor for me to put that on the agenda was so that we can get a dialogue started with the City of Sioux Falls and we can start to share with them the importance of starting to have a voice above and beyond maybe what we've already had in talking about that joint jurisdictional area. Because there are some concerns. There's some things we've got to iron out. There's some concerns we've got to air. One of the questions I have, Toby, is I'm looking here, not that, would you go up one page? Yeah. And then you zoom in on that jurisdictional no man's land there between Harrisburg and Sioux Falls, just above 106. You know, I know in the past, City of Sioux Falls wanted to assert that it wanted to have, you know, authority going all the way down to 106. And Harrisburg has expressed interest in wanting to extend public services north of 106. Is there now some kind of détente or some kind of agreement? Or maybe less than that, we'll call it a shared understanding maybe of who is going to extend public services to that area in the white shading just north of the Harrisburg subdivision authority?
No, great question. So first and foremost, this map's outdated. So we would have to go through a formal update to update it. But there is an agreement that 106 is the boundary between Harrisburg and Sioux Falls. And I'll talk real briefly about that. As state law requires that you can extend a subdivision authority up to three miles except equidistant from a municipality. So legally, Harrisburg and Sioux Falls can't get to 106 unless they have a joint agreement. They did that a number of years ago to establish it as that boundary, to allow them to essentially encroach on each other. There is some, as Harrisburg goes through their planning process, and again, you know, some people look back at those population numbers and say, what's the explosion in 2000? That's when Sioux Falls really came over the ridge, was in the 2000s. That's when they invested heavily in lift stations and sewerability to pump the stuff back. But if you look at it, it's challenging for Sioux Falls to grow to the south because they have to pump it back to their treatment system, which is the most limiting factor in growth and development, is sewerability. The City of Harrisburg, they can gravity flow it all the way back to their wastewater treatment plants. So they're raising the question. They're raising the question that is 106 a logical boundary? When they have sewerability up to above 106, it would be cost efficient for the cities, the taxpayers. So I think those dialogues are ongoing. But what I'll say with that is yes. What we're experiencing, what we experience every day as staff, is something that no other county in the state of South Dakota is experiencing. And I question if anybody in the nation's experienced that. The growth, the challenges, the impacts that we have, and I'll leave it with the issues that we have. And the goal of staff is to really solve issues before they become problems, because when they become problems, you're limited in your solutions and it's more expensive to solve them. So part of leadership is part of that strategic plan that we all need to engage in as an organization, the county, is we need to start engaging these different entities to make sure that we're all playing together, we're all working together to achieve what really the taxpayer wants, which is low taxes and good development. So I think an answer to that question is, yeah, there's a lot of work that needs to be done between some of our municipalities. And we need to step up and be the leaders for that discussion dialogue.
Yeah, and it's my hope, hopefully, that tonight's meeting serves as a good first step in creating that dialogue. You know, I know that, you know, I'll just rip the Band-Aid off, Sioux Falls has equities in it, Harrisburg has equities in it. And I'm hoping that we can bring everyone together to come up with a workable solution because I am concerned that if we take this approach of allowing growth and development to simply move from the north to the south in the joint area, it means that there's portions of the joint area that won't see any growth and development for anywhere, according to the City of Sioux Falls here in their letter, from 16 to 25 years. I understand some of that is just simply a function of you can't put sewer in there. But from the county perspective, we're obviously very concerned about upward pressure on property taxes. Increased growth and development will drive that down through increased revenue. But also, we've got a housing crisis in the Sioux Falls metro area, especially affordable housing. And so if we can open up areas, open to more affordable housing in that area, that would also help as well. Second question I have, Toby, is subdivision planning authority. And one of the things I think we need to do, because you have such, and I think you hit the nail on the head, you know, whether we're the only county or not in the nation having these issues or not, I don't know. But we definitely are facing significant growing pains between the incorporated area, i.e. the subdivision planning authority area, and the county area. And because those boundary lines are literally moving each, I mean, I don't think I'm exaggerating this. I think the boundary lines are literally moving each month, if you will, to a certain extent. I mean, in terms of the growth and development, I mean, in terms of the planning authority area. But, you know, right now, what I'm seeing is we're running into issues where we don't have clear lines of authority on subdivision planning authority areas and whether or not a municipality is going to apply its subdivision ordinances in those areas. Because there's people who live just on the other side of the unincorporated area who are saying to myself, why'd my ditch get filled in? And if we have another 1,000-year flood, which apparently is now happening every six years in this county, you don't want to be the guy whose ditch is dammed up by the developer because when you're on that side of things, you're going to get flooded out. And you don't want to have citizens paying out of their own pocket to sue developers because they got flooded. We'd rather have government step in in these sorts of areas because these are public domain areas that we've got to clear the lines on. So what I'm concerned about is we're getting ditches filled and we've got some municipalities who are not applying their laws equally, I don't believe. I think there's some unequal application of subdivision authority ordinances. And I'd like to use this process to get that cleaned up.
Yep, and I agree. And I think that's an issue that we have currently, but the hope is to solve that issue before it becomes a real problem.
Yeah.
Toby, for those that might be listening that want to attend tonight, it's in Sioux Falls.
Yeah.
At what time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Carnegie Hall. But again, that's limited to the Sioux Falls growth plan. You know, this part of, so our plan, the goal is we'll do a blitz in the next two months to hit as many stakeholders as we can get to make sure they know, but to have a fully adaptable plan for you sometime in December or January of this year, so that we can move forward with our policies.
I can share that. I did talk to the Lenox City Administrator over the weekend and he shared that I think Lenox issued 11 building permits last Friday. That's a lot of building permits. So it shows that the growth is coming and not just in the area that we talk about, just south of Sioux Falls. I mean, it's the municipalities as well.
Yep. And, you know, in general, the interest rates have had a real hit on development. But the word is that those interest rates are going to start changing and so we need to be prepared for the growth and development. We're a desirable place to be. So I'll leave you with that, is that Lincoln County is a desirable place to be for investment. And our goal really is to just continue that. Don't want to get in the way of that change in that, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Just a quick comment, not wanting a lot of discussion here today on this, but the one thing that has been prevalent in the rural areas, which is what we're governing, is those that live in and operate within there are very rarely wanting to see change. So that's something to consider is if we're truly looking at those individuals and property owners and such in those areas that we're truly talking about, it's rare that we've ever had an eagerness of adjoining property owners to see some change in their vicinity. So, thank you.
And I would add to that. I think part of the problem is, is it's a shock factor, is that all of a sudden it just comes out of nowhere. And then they're looking at our plans and going, well, whereas, how does that fit? So I 100% agree with you, but this is what's happening today. And it's important that we share that with the public so they have an understanding of it. And they can plan to with what they want to do, so.
Thanks for your work on it, Toby.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're to the point where we'll open up for opportunity for public comment. Please give your name and address. We'll give you approximately three minutes. Good morning.
Hi, Betty Otten, 4678-7270, Third Street and T. Actually, my comment has to do with the comprehensive plan, and I totally agree with Commissioner Poppins, because listening to the P and Z last week, I think there's great concern because there was a lot of talk, although it was shadowy, about taking away building eligibility. Is that true or not true in this comprehensive plan? That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Toby, is there?
No.
Was there any discussion about that?
No, but probably, so to clarify it, no, the building eligibility would still exist, but within that planned growth area, you could exceed the building eligibility requirements, only within that area.
You could exceed it?
You could, yes. Yeah. But no, building eligibility would still exist and they'll still be valuable in those areas, but in those specific areas where you have planned growth and development, we would allow rezones to residential in those areas. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, I addressed that with the, there was considerable talk about maintaining rural, keeping rural, and keeping the ag area agricultural. And I talked about the fact that there are those building eligibility that sit out there on every quarter section of ground where there are four eligibility. And with the sale of the property, many times that those building eligibility is are sequestered out so that they become not part of the original sale of the land, but they become separate. So they sell an eligibility, well, now you're, it's just like a building lot, for example, inside of a city. So the challenge is to maintain ag, but at the same time, in understanding that there will be those acreages that can pop up. And they're fully within the scope of the landowner to sell. So you're going to have to issue, you're going to have a challenge on that one, so.
Okay. Any other public comment? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Not so much public comment, but offering a little update on our process in getting people back on their feet after our flood. We have, they've opened up a business, SBA office in the old bank across the street. That's scheduled to open up today. There'll be a FEMA presence there also. We are working to get the depot in Canton here open for individual assistance to where homeowners can go there and get an application filled out to get some help for their home damage. They're waiting for their security contract to get in place before they can open that. So that'll be a good place for it to be. This afternoon at 2:00 PM, we're having a meeting with our townships and cities to get them started on the recovery process after the declaration was declared. It's our public assistance and we're approaching $13 million in damage, just in public assistance alone for roads, bridges, and culverts. We have about 130 homes that were affected and hopefully, these people will also get some help through low-interest SBA loans or direct help from FEMA in getting some recovery that wasn't covered by their insurance companies. We have the beginning stages of a process to see what can be done to eliminate some of the water coming down through Canton, mainly on Cedar Street and Dakota. CCOG is beginning to work on some plans to check on some engineering to see what's possible and feasible. And so we'll be waiting on those comments too, once we get further down that road. So part of it's going to be working with the railroad, which sometimes can be a challenge. There's a ditch on the east side of the railroad that's really obstructed with debris and trees and should be cleaned out, but we'll see how that process will go too, so. Any questions you have about any of these processes?
Harold, I did get in contact with someone from Burlington North in Santa Fe, and he promised me that he would come down. He said that he couldn't give me an exact date, but I'm sure when he does, I'll let you know and maybe we can visit with him and share some of the things that people at Canton are concerned about, obviously, with their flooding. Is this also for people in rural areas that are listening? They can come into Canton to the depot that have had flooding issues in their basement?
Once we get this open, there'll be an announcement made, whether it'll be through the FEMA Public Information Officer or something that I put together to get out to the media and on our webpages so everybody knows.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harold.
Any other public comment? If not, Commissioners, any reports?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I handed the commission and I gave out for public, there was an article that appeared in the Argus Leader here about a week ago talking, and it was a report from the Study Committee on Property Tax Assessment Methodology, where they're looking at property taxes. And it's an interesting read, talking about how property taxes are paid and who pays what. And it talks about how real estate, there's a growing tension between real estate, I mean, owner-occupied individuals that own their homes and ag land. And ag land has actually gone down in its value, or not value, but in its portion of taxes that they pay. So I would encourage you to read this thing. This is kind of interesting. It takes you about five minutes, but it kind of explains the challenges that Lincoln County has, for example, in their taxing process. So I think it's a good read, so.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners have anything to report?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just want to report to the public, fellow Commissioners, that last week, City of Harrisburg held a public meeting and a vote on whether or not to extend wastewater treatment services to the- to the proposed prison. And the state of South Dakota had offered the city, I think, $7 million to pay off some of their debt, related to the construction of the wastewater treatment facility. And there were about 200 people who showed up. I was there, Mr. Chairman, you were there. Thank you for your comments, by the way, that you gave at the meeting. I think city councillors really appreciated your perspective as well. But city council unanimously voted it down, and told the state of South Dakota, they don't want the money, and they don't want to extend public services in support of the prison. So, that happened last week, and I guess we'll just have to wait and see what happens with the litigation and the judge's decision. I think we're going on about seven or eight months now since the hearing, still waiting for a decision there. And, but, there was a very large contingent of people there, Mr. Chairman, to speak, as you know, and I would say, the thought process was unanimous, so, against the prison being located there. People did bring up very good thoughtful comments. It wasn't just some lynch mob that showed up. It was actually very educational. Folks gave a lot of good, good comments regarding land use and planning and zoning. Several people pointed out how it was inconsistent with the county's planning and zoning proposed for that area. And I would just note that, in the plan that we have here, we still don't have any plans to develop that area in the future. And I think that's a nod to the fact that this Commission just doesn't see that area as being developable like the state does for, for the time being. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other comments? I guess I'd just only like to make one comment, that our Supreme Court, the state of South Dakota, made a very interesting decision in regard to pipelines. And I guess we will hear maybe more further down the road, but I think maybe we were a little bit surprised by the, the outcome. But nonetheless, it's, they have spoken, and I guess we will hear more in the future. Anything else? Do we have executive session? Oh, we do, under which one, Drew? You want to come up here and?
Under which? Under subsection three.
Pardon?
Under subsection three of 125, two subsection three.
Okay.
I would move to go into executive session, under STCL 125, two sub three.
Okay, is, do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Do I have them? Go ahead. Move to adjournment.
Second.
Commission meeting. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?